I'd like to call this special meeting. It's April fifth, Wednesday at six P M. We like to call the special meeting to order. And then first item on the agenda is roll call.
To that, Mark. Here.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Grabson.
Here.
Here.
All right, we have one agenda item. First off, I'd like to welcome everybody who's attending the meeting tonight. Thank you. And secondly, I would like to introduce the commission to our new. What's your title? Zoning Administrator, which will be official on Monday, and she will be. Oh, it already was. Okay, I thought I I misunderstood you. So anyway. Congratulations and 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 welcome. And she put together our packet and thank you. Nice job. All right, so open for new business case number two, three, seven, two, two. Site plan amendment for lots at Lumber Square, nine hundred Emmett Street. Lisa, do you have anything to say?
Give a summary of the general model of the project was originally approved by the planning commission in August of twenty twenty. The.
Thank you. I forget they time out. I know. I'm not used to talking. I'm just hanging in the back corner. Oh, sorry. So this was approved in twenty twenty. Due to lack of grant funding, the planning commission's approval did expire. After eighteen months, so they did come back in April of twenty two and were able to get a slightly modified plan approved with conditions. When reviewing and comparing the previously approved plans of twenty two to the current submitted plans, there were some changes noted. There was a slight increase in parking. The overall square footage of the building increased. Landscaping was reduced. Impervious surface was increased. Building footprint appears to be revised on the south ends of the building. There were some facade changes. Outdoor seating added to the courtyard. Slight modification to the dumpster area. The bike rack was relocated, or there is a bike rack before it was a indicated as a parking bike area. And the A D O ramp access to the greenway corridor has been changed to stairs. When reviewing section seventeen sixteen three of the site plan performance standards. This is a proposed three-story sixty eight thousand seven hundred twenty-four foot square multiple family building with sixty units. There have been a few slight changes with the setbacks, but they are all within the minimum or maximum requirements of that section of the ordinance. The Department of Public Safety has previously reviewed the access points and believe that they are adequate for the site. And they would review a building emergency access plan once that is available. Facade changes include consolidation of individual balconies to one community balcony at the corner of Emmett and Fulton Streets. Elimination of window overhangs. Entrance roof lines are proposed to be flat rather than pitched roof lines previously proposed. And then pedestrian entrance has been added at the corner of Emmett and Fulton Streets. Exterior materials have been. Changed as well. Those have been outlined in. The applicant's review of section three, zero, zero, three point two. It does appear that the building footprint has been modified on the south east and southwest ends of the building. Where divider walls have been added and they appear to encroach on the sidewalk along the parking lot area there. Ingress and egress, that standard has been met. They will have to. Remove the existing curb on the south Emmett Street access. And replace it with curb and lawn, and then the existing access on Washington Street. Is a bit smaller than what was that was indicated on the plan, but the approaches will be required to meet the city standard of eight inches of concrete to accommodate heavy vehicle access. Landscaping has been modified. There were the original plan from twenty twenty. Indicated that there will be landscape trees among the is actually in the right of way on Fulton Street. And seven white cedar evergreen trees, four pine trees were previously proposed along the west property line. To provide a separation from the rail corridor. Those have been removed. There were. I mentioned the three street trees on the Fulton Street side. And then six juniper trees are removed from the north and south sides of Emmett Street entrance. And then maple tree was moved from the south property line. Staff recommends that all trees be native species and that the standard could be met with additional screening. Lighting plan was submitted, however. We do need one that's a little clearer to read, so they will submit that. That is something that staff can review and approve. So that would be one of the requests is that they submit that for staff review and approval. There are no natural or historic features to the site from our lumber company, so that standard is met. As I indicated earlier, the parking was adjusted slightly. It would increase by one parking space. It does meet the standard. One and a half parking spaces per unit. Street parking is available on all three street frontages. While bike parking has been identified, the minimum bike park parking spaces requires twenty eight. It is believed that standard could be met with additional bike parking. Previously, it was discussed that the sidewalk along Fulton Street needed to extend to the rest property line, which the plan does indicate that that has been addressed or will be addressed. And then again, the ADA border entrance has been modified, but other than that, the standard has been met. I don't know that ADA compliance is a requirement, but I know that's something that the planning commission had discussed previously back in twenty twenty as well. No signage is indicated. So again, that would be a condition of approval that they will need to provide a sign from the application for staff review and approval. Stormwater drainage. There is an underground stormwater filtration system proposed at the south end of the site. And that will need to be reviewed by the Public Works Department to make sure that it is adequately sized. Crash enclosure. It is indicated in screen, so that standard has been met. Utilities, the utilities were installed, the laterals were installed during the Emmett Street construction project and meets the needs of the of the building. Transferment location need to be provided and new hydrant placed at the south end of the building that will connect to the existing eight inch lateral. And the F T C will also need to be located at the southwest corner of the building. Any existing utility services that no longer be used must be removed and the standard is met. And then upon review of the grading drain, the plans that have been submitted in your packet before you. dated March twentieth, March twenty first, March twenty second. The site plan standards and requirements of the B two district section three, zero, zero, three, A, one and two. When section seventeen sixteen three site plan standards. Can be met with the following conditions. Additional screening be added along the west and south property lines and three street trees planted along the north property line. A revised landscape plan should be submitted for staff review and approval. Submitting of a lighting plan for staff review and approval prior to installation, a minimum of twenty eight bike parking spaces. Submitting of any signage for staff reviewing and approval. Review and approval of the stormwater management system by the Department of Public Works. Right away permits issued by the Department of Public Works for curb cut relocations and removals sidewalks and hydrant location. Utility connection shall be coordinated with the Department of Public Works. And final plans are to be approved by the city and signed by the chairperson and applicant.
Good. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to introduce things?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Andrew Sporfar. I'm with Han Development, the development consultant for the project. I also have with me this evening a team of folks. My colleague Cory Monroe. Jane McKenzie, Executive Director of Northern Homes Community Development Corporation, who will eventually be the owner and operator of the project. Sarah Ford with the Harbor Springs Potaski Community Foundation, really a key sponsor of the project and also the landowner representative. Eric Maing with Hooker De Young, who has joined us via Zoom is our architect. And Tim Newton with Beckton Raider, our landscape architect. First off, I just want to thank you for accommodating our request for this special meeting. An approval here today will help ensure we maintain our project schedule and deliver these sixty workforce housing units as timely as possible. As staff has noted, and some of you, I think, were a part of, the project received previous site plan approval in twenty twenty. And in twenty twenty-two, this latest approval is still being active. That previous approval really allowed the development team to go out and pursue some state financing. With the Michigan Economic Development Corporation last summer. And in the fall of last year, we received a preapproval from M E D C. For that funding, which really gave us the confidence to further progress in the development process as well as the design. As you can imagine, as we, you know, went through that and refined the design of the building, we took further and. Into further consideration, some improvements like resident livability, building longevity, and just the overall quality of the design. That progression has really led us to some of the changes we're asking for approval this evening that obviously Lisa and some folks have thoroughly reviewed. And provided an overview of. Our next steps after this approval this evening are to submit building permits for the coming weeks. And then in mid-May, the project is on the M E D C board approved or board meeting agenda for that really final approval of the funding that we've received in the fall. All other financing is committed, which is wonderful, and this will really allow us to maintain our construction schedule for start in the summer. That gives you a completion about the end of twenty twenty-four is our is our hopeful schedule. We truly believe this requested amendment here this evening will ensure really high higher quality product. And we hope you agree. We're here for questions and again, thank you.
Okay. Questions for Andrew? Go ahead, Todd.
I always like to ask if staff has some recommendations. Additional things to meet site plan standards. Do you have any comments on those items, one through eight?
As far as staff's, as far as your feelings about. We're comfortable with staff's recommendations that that have been summarized.
What was the current bike parking? It suggested they be twenty eight or how many?
Our exact number Eric might be able to confirm right now. I don't have it off the top of my head right here, but as far as us. Meeting twenty eight, we can definitely.
Okay.
Oh, yes. We have two locations, I believe. We had two locations identified. I think one of them may have been removed in that plan, but we can, there's there's space for additional bike parking.
So it wouldn't be because you do have only one location. On your.
Correct.
Site plan. So it might be in a different location.
I think we have room in that current location in the kind of the middle of the courtyard there at their entrance to courtyard. And but we also had a location identified at one point kind of towards one of the entrances on both the wings of the of the property where the stairwells are.
I'm looking at the parking that faces Washington Street, I guess, to the south. And thinking about the screening of that, it looks like it's arborvitae. You know, how would that be planted? Would it be? An adequate screen or is this required growth to become a screener?
I I'm maybe I'm Tim a little bit on this here with Beckton Raider, but I believe you're talking about the the southwest parking area. Currently, there are on the plan that you have, I think there are arborvitae on the east side screening, a single family home. On the other side of the retention. Your original plan and staff noted this had some, I think, I don't know if there are variety or evergreens. On juniper on the west side that were removed in this updated plan. They were removed for considerations of snow removal. But if screening is required, we can obviously, we're very open to putting that back or doing some sort of screening on that west edge of the park.
Yeah, the west side was the white cedar trees and yes, sorry, the junipers were on the east side by the drive entrance.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments or someone from the team on the removal of of some of the landscaping? That's suggested we put back why that was done, or was that just an oversight or?
I might again call on Tim a little bit here, but overall, we we looked at the landscape and we we believe that we're actually. Improving and building upon what was previously submitted, and I'll expand a little bit on that. We did remove, as we just talked about, some of the screening on that side of the the parking on the west side there. Really for considerations of of snow removal, but we're open to to introducing something there to provide that screening. Around the building itself, along the street frontage is really where we looked to be able to increase landscaping. There was a few small scattered trees along those areas. What we have done is incorporated really planting areas across the whole frontage along Emmett. Fulton and then some planting areas along the greenway. That's as it has been added. And along with additional landscaping and considerations within the courtyard area and along the parking along the building as well.
So what would those plantings be?
Yes, I might call up Tim here to expand on that.
Hi. Like a good reader. To answer your question about the plantings, the planting areas withhold native shrubs, perennials and grasses. So one of the things we're trying to do is is carve out a significant amount of planting area because the project at the moment is targeting. Lead certification. So there's a ratio we have to strike between. Planted area and lawn area, obviously favoring planted area. So we haven't gotten to the point yet where we have concurrence on what goes there and what form, but it would be. Native shrubs, perennials and grasses. I think the only other criteria we were considering or we were. Proudness of is keeping all the material low enough so people can maintain the views out the first four windows.
I just had a comment. When we discussed this last, I believe it was APO, we had, you know, pictures like you would see here. It showed the the facade, the building in the landscaping. I don't seem to have that now. I don't believe. You know, I have pictures more like this of the facade. So it's a little hard. I mean, you're trying to look at the other landscaping plan, but it's a little hard to judge. That aspect for me.
I'm I'm sure we can put together something from a from a grade level to help people understand the intent.
And so landscape questions.
Hold on, Ted, were you done?
That's fine.
Okay.
Um. Looking at the overall, the street plan and the curb cuts along Emmett Street and Washington Street, the existing. Road and curbs itself themselves. Is this the updated that it's gonna be? In the future for this city?
That's I'm not sure I understand the question.
Parking like out in front of Tom and Dix. Isn't shown here. I'm I'm just not sure if the curbing is correct.
Oh, on the street edge.
Yeah.
I might have to let you.
Yeah.
Like, is that up to date where it shows the curb going in towards Tom and Dix? Is that? The actual parking spaces? Because there's a sidewalk and then like landscape.
The opposite side of where our side. Eric may be able to confirm across the way, but the area that.
Because right now there's street parking. On either side of Emmett Street, correct?
Yes, there is street parking on either side of Emmett Street. The curb line that is noted on the drawing, which I believe is actually on it, well, L one. But should should match the site plan and should be the existing situation.
So where I'm getting at it with this question is. I've lived in cities and apartment buildings, and there's always the question of where do you park to unload your car that's full of furniture or a moving truck? And I see the main entrance with the double doors in the elevator in the elevator are in the northeast corner. So I'm wondering, you know, should we be doing some sort of a. Unloading loading zone along Fulton Street out from there.
Understood. Yes, so we have two stairwells on the south, obviously in those south corridors or on the south end of those corridors. And then you're correct, the elevators at the end are up in the northeast corner at that. Entrance or main pedestrian entrance. You know, I could see. Loading and unloading kind of happening in both locations. Would that obviously be helpful potentially? Yes.
I mean, if you block one entrance, if there's cars parked at the. Southern parking lot and then you, you know, someone's pulling up with a U-Haul truck behind them, you're totally blocking that parking.
Yeah.
Entrance way. It's just a thought. And then also the that existing home on the south edge of the property. That's the street faces Washington Street. And you have plantings along there, but I'm wondering a question sort of for the commission is if we should be doing a fence or a wall to protect light from going into that backyard. Like we've done in other situations.
There is now an existing fence that I believe the resident had has put up after. After some of that building had been removed, there kind of was surrounded by by buildings at the time, but there is a fence up now. We would then be protecting it further with the arbivites that are provided there.
Okay. That was it for my questions.
You're seeing a solid fence now. There is a solid wood picket fence there now. Yes.
Okay.
Normally that's required by you to provide the fence, so I'm wondering. Ten years from now, that that fence is falling. Lisa, do I have this right? Wouldn't they be required to replace it?
I don't believe they would be required to replace it on the homeowner's property. They are required to have, which is what. They were proposing with those arborvitae along there. They are required to have a hedge or like Carolyn said, a finished wall of some sort. Basically to block any parking lot from the street or anyone's yard area. So that's what the.
So their arborvitae would. If that fence failed, they would have fulfilled their obligations based on the arborvitae?
By planting, correct?
Okay. Unless we decided that. In the future, it needed to be a fence on their side.
Kind of wall.
Well, I think we kind of have to decide it now though.
Yeah. Anybody have an opinion?
Does anyone have any more questions? Should we go there, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm done with my questions, but.
Okay.
I've got a couple of things.
Okay.
I I am a little concerned. About the it's aesthetically, it's. Pretty drastically changed from the last. Plans you sent us and. Is that just? An economic thing or what? I. I really, I really liked the previous plan with the balconies and the. Little roofs over the first story windows and it really made a nice. Architectural statement, I thought, for that neighborhood. And it's quite different now.
All right. I can respond?
Please.
So just generally, as we went back, we looked for opportunities to, again, we felt like we were. Increasing the 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 quality of the building, looking for. Some abilities to engage and maybe break down the massing a little bit as well. Overall, the height of the building stayed consistent with thirty three feet. You know, the building footprint really has remained very, very similar. And, you know, the design continues to have kind of three-story flat roof. As you mentioned, we did. Consolidate the balconies to one balcony. That was a consideration we did take some time with, but. As we looked at that, we felt that there was some opportunity to, if we did that, to reduce the mass in some areas where we can incorporate the roof terrace. From experience, we have found that that what some may find acceptable and beautiful on their balconies, the surrounding community may not. And this is a great way to offer a really great amenity for all of the residents. In one larger balcony instead of individual smaller balconies. And also use that as a way to kind of articulate the mass more. So we've located. Really combined all that into one roof terrace at the corner of Emmett and Fulton. And that has allowed us to reduce the height of the building there and drop it down to two stories. The building plane has changed. Instead of the balconies, there was one, there was one flat plane. In the previous design, we really. Then the removal of the balconies introduced the stepping of the building in different variations, so wider in some areas, smaller in other really to again, break down the mass and provide. Points where there's material changes. The base material, the lap siding is consistent with what was there previously. We we have introduced some other materials, really. An accent material that I think was really brick before we've introduced, which this is Eric, maybe Eric can talk a little bit about. But introducing a kind of a wood looking material that I think really complements the history of the site being the hanky lumber site and using that as an accent. And then introduced some material on the pop outs that really give the feeling of shift lap, which is a good residential feeling. Exterior skin material while providing some really resiliency with a metal product. But Eric, you might have something to add.
And my other good question was, previously, there was access to the greenway. Like a transitional area. Because at some point that will be. A a a. An area that will be walked and biked and. So what, how are you addressing that now?
Yes, so right now there are stairs. There was a ramp previously. Obviously, we would love to see the greenway progressed as part of this project. There is some financing in our brownfield tip for the project and the greenway. So we're really excited about that. But we did look at kind of what the best way to connect our project to the greenway would be. There is some grading. That needs to be figured out between the two. We're kind of planning for both conditions.
Let me just say, you know, you mentioned there was a rant before. Well, with the bike, it's a whole lot easier to move a bike down there and.
And we did look at the alternative route, the accessible route to the greenway. And the introduction of that, the entrance at the corner of of Fulton and Emmett. It is really right next to the elevator now as well, provides accessible route out of that entrance easily down to the greenway. Either through Fulton or down Emmett, which is a good connection in downtown. So we. I will say, we contemplated that same situation, but a ramp given the elevation change and, you know, the the. Still, the design work needed to go there was a consideration.
Yeah. I guess that's all I had for now.
Okay.
Brad?
Are we just asking questions now or are we commenting?
No, we're asking questions if you have questions.
Maybe this is a question for Tim on the surface treatment of the underground. Where the underground stormwater storage area is, what would the surface treatment there would be? Would that be a lot? Yes. Okay. And is that usable on? I mean. I assume because water is piped in from the perimeter, that that's usable play area, let's say, where people could throw. Whisbees or whatever there and it's it's not a problem to the storage function. Correct, yes. Okay. Um. And then regarding the materials, I see on the elevations, there was called out that there are. The lap siding, the materials number two and three, there were metal panels. Are eight inches wide and twelve inches wide. And the vinyl siding wasn't called out to have any particular width, but. Based on the way it was drawn on the elevations, I'm presuming that. The vinyl siding is a is a six inch horizontal. With, is that my assuming that right?
Eric may be able to confirm what we're on the vinyl siding and actually he might be able to confirm on the. The metal panel because I believe it was, yes, twelve and eight. You are correct. It's Eric. He's muted, but.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry. Yeah, I I think we were figuring more of a probably a four or five inch reveal on the. On the the vinyl siding, just something that's pretty typical. And then we were looking at something a little bit. You know, a little bit different for the for the accent siding. Just we didn't want that to feel like it was all siding. We wanted to give it a different reveal. Again, so it wasn't just didn't feel like a big sided box.
Is the is the metal panel siding a lapped profile? Is the me- is the metal panel siding a, a lapped profile or is it a flush profile?
It'd be like a flush profile with a reveal, I can share.
Okay.
Share my screen.
It gives a ship lap.
Right, right.
Uh, except for not being wood or MDF, it is a metal, which is, it's. Considerably more resilient.
So metal. Those are going and a separate width of vinyl siding.
Correct.
Just to try to summarize the exterior materials.
Yep, correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, on most main sections.
And my other question was the vinyl windows, are they? Are, are the, the brand that you've chosen a, you know, good quality vinyl window brand?
Yeah, we're currently looking at, at a Pella window for that, not a, not a, you know, very basic. Window, but a more of an upgraded Pella.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, and lead, it will need to be up from a higher quality window and I laughed at that because Eric has heard uh. Heard me stress about windows, um, so I appreciate the.
Yeah, and you can kind of see the elevation as we were actually looking at like a cottage sash. So like the top sash is a little bit smaller than the bottom sash, again, just to kind of maybe give it a little bit more contemporary feel. Without going to a full, you know, funky. Uh, million configuration.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie?
Matt?
Yeah, I was just curious on the landscape plan. That I'm, that we got tonight here. It shows a five-foot-high vinyl fence.
This is all okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the plan of what was previously approved.
Okay, perfect.
Was that Ben's scream?
Yeah, and I, I wasn't part of the old. Plan, so I saw this tonight.
And, uh. That was along the s- the edge is what you're.
Yeah, where that, that house.
I just, you have a comment, maybe a question, I mean, I didn't see it on the previous one, there are elements of the previous one, I would just comment that. I did actually like those, those awnings, um. On the first floor seemed to look more like something you might see more neighborhoodish, um. So this loses some of those features, although I know you're talking about relief along the wall, but there was some relief before with the balconies. And the balconies weren't as quite as high as the roof line, so that changed a little. When I look at the new plan, I mean, we talked, we just talked about windows, so I had to make a comment or question, um. Typically, if you look at a neighborhood, I, I'm, I'm not going to get the terms correct, but a window has. A window, but then there's a trim around it, typically a four inch. And then there's more of a, a, a top piece and. So that's why when you look at something like this, a lot of people might look at that and say, gee, this looks a little plainer, it doesn't quite look like a neighborhood. To me, I just was involved in an old house renovation. It, it screams, that's what's different, you would never see this in that neighborhood, there's no. I mean, short of someone doing a, a remodeling, uh, a redo. Where they took out something nice and historic and just put up siding right up to the window. I just, I did something like that, that's what. If you look at this thing, that's what would look very different from a home in the area, there would typically be. A treatment of trim around the window, do you have any, any comments on the ability to do that or that kind of an idea?
Yeah, and Eric, you might be able to, um, just hit on the detail of that and some of this might be allocation, uh, and just. Uh, you know, the size uh, of, of trying to show some of that.
Yep, we were figuring a trim, a trim around that where we have the vinyl siding. And where we would have the metal panel, maybe it's a cleaner detail with. Um, just a window frame there at the detail, so just, you know, kind of a mix of both. A more traditional and a little bit more um, contemporary.
Cause it doesn't seem to so much width to that, what would you say that would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're probably only showing maybe two and a half, but we could increase the size of that.
Typically, and we've got a.
Okay. And, and increasing, yeah, to that, that. Definitely, and that's doable with obviously the siding and the metal.
So that was more of a traditional look was, was more of a, I mean, I've seen four inches and very. Two is a little, little small.
Yeah.
That's something that we might vary depending on the plane, whether it's up out or bump in. The width of the trim.
So on the um, divider walls, uh. I was wondering, it looks like they jot out into the sidewalk, so can you explain the divider walls?
Uh, yes, and I think on the, the, the north, I don't think has that, I don't call it an issue, but has that condition. Uh, the south too, that are there to kind of accent, to provide some, um, to bring that material down to that area as well. Um, does kind of protrude, it separates a little bit of the stairwell and um, on one side, the west side. There's a maintenance access on that side and then there's stairwell on one, and I think that was a little bit there to, to separate that. Uh, and then the other one is separating a stairwell and kind of more main entrance into the office, um. Cue that consideration, I think we're flexible on, on that, obviously in that connection point, but.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say it again, Eric?
I think we can pull that wall back so that it doesn't infringe, at least on our main drive or our main walk in front of the parking.
And the proportions will still.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
So does that have to be in our, um, eight? We have to add a nine. On conditions.
Stephanie, I had a question.
Yeah.
While we're talking about that wing wall, is that a roof structure that is over the office windows? On that first floor that you've seen the elevation, it's on the roof plan, but.
There's the.
Yeah, there is a, there is a, there is a, a canopy that will extend over the both legs of the, of the building.
Okay.
On the south side, yep.
So that could also be some good undercover bike parking area.
Yeah, we had actually, it didn't show up on here, but we had, we had looked at on the, on the west side. Um, kind of by those steps as we were looking at some covered bike parking there too.
And uh, Jane has reminded me that we actually have already removed the, the one wing wall, um, that protrudes. On the west side, yes.
So you have, so you deleted the wall completely?
That wall does no longer protrudes past the, the edge there.
Yeah, yep, yep.
And that was where we had talked about bike storage.
Exactly. Yep.
And then when you're looking at the elevations, the um, the north elevation on the far left side. Is, are those planter boxes? Or are those benches?
Yeah, we were looking at um, some kind of uh, planter boxes, I think the last design that we had. We really didn't have anything at that corner and we just felt like that was a missed opportunity to not have a, a building that addresses the corner. So, you know, our, our proposal is to, as you see the, the, the double door entry there. Maybe some planter sitting areas to kind of activate that corner more than what we had. Before, which was, I don't think we had any walks or anything going to that corner, so. And then as well, we have the terrace at that corner too, so again, really trying to activate. Um, that corner from, you know, both a scales, scale proportion.
Okay, on the uh, roof plans, the elevator pops up and you have that, uh. Covered in some kind of siding. Is anything else?
You know, resident amenities down there.
Pardon me?
Say that again, sorry.
Oh, oh, all right. So on the roof plans, the elevator, uh. You know, juts up above the roof line and that's visible and you have that covered, is any, any other? Mechanisms going to be out there that uh, would be seen from? Like across the street? In terms of parapet, I just want a clarification on that. Is that, is the roof line to the roof or is it a, a parapet that goes up to? Feet taller to hide what's on the roof?
Yeah, currently we have, um, just there'll be condensing units up there that can. You know, they're kind of spread out now, we've talked about kind of shifting those more towards the courtyard area. Um, I think we've, there's really not much of a parapet to stay within the, the thirty-three feet, it, it extends up a little bit, but maybe. You know, four to six inches, so, um, it won't shield it directly horizontally. But we've done some studies and across the street, um, you won't be able to see those uh, condensing units. Just based on the grade and the angle of visibility, so. Those are only, I mean, those are just a residential. Condensing unit like, you know, thirty inches high.
Cause normally with, that we do, and I'm not sure, I didn't find it in B two B. But normally, we would like a two-foot parapet to hide what's on the roof from the surrounding area.
Yeah, I looked that, I, the only, the only place that I saw the requirement in the zoning was, I think, the hospital district where. There was a requirement for mechanical.
So I think. That's something we need to update in our ordinance, but I'm.
Yeah.
Wondering if it's something that you could do, how would that? Change the proportions if you were to put. A two-foot parapet there to.
Right, yeah.
Conceal.
Yeah. Right, yeah, we've talked about that a little bit, I mean, I think we were trying to stick within the, the thirty-three feet. You know, that we had before, I think the, the ordinance changed. Um, since then, but I think we were nervous about making a lot more changes than what we had before, but we could certainly look at. It if that's desirable for.
Okay, is that acceptable to the planning commission to request a two-foot parapet?
In the next set of the existing overall height?
Yeah, it would be over and above.
Over and above. Yeah, it would have to be higher, yeah.
What they're showing is. Only two inches above the roof. Um, in the downtown area and in the hospital district. There's like a two-foot. Parapet, parapet. Condition, which I think we have, we should be looking at as we update the. The ordinance, that that be standard.
Yeah.
Uh, I totally agree, um, and per- perhaps it presents an opportunity architecturally as well. For the, the visual facade.
Okay, so are. Are you following Rick?
No, are, are you saying that we should allow the building to be two feet higher than the allowable thirty-three feet?
No, we changed that and the allowable. Footage is thirty-seven feet. Thirty-three feet was the previous. We're not adding. Above what we allow.
For this zone.
So it, it would end up being thirty-five feet. In a zone that allows thirty-seven.
Okay.
So I'm just asking is, is the uh. Are we all in agreement to request the two-foot parapet to block, uh. What's on the roof? You're not willing to request that?
No, I mean, this is a building that we're trying to keep, you know, moving forward for affordable housing and there's a price tag associated with everything. And adding two feet of structure on the. Entire perimeter seems like a huge price tag. That maybe isn't necessary, if there are two units up there and they're willing to move them closer to the courtyard. Of the building's um, interior, then. Think we should accept that.
Okay.
If you were able to condense those mechanical units to a certain area on the structure. I mean, could there be screening around those? Units to kind of block them from.
Yes.
From sight.
Yep. And we have, uh, you know, looked in this current situation, as Eric said, you know. Where we are locating things now from at least the sidewalk across the street, uh, the condensers are not visible, um. You know, uh, obviously you go uphill on Fulton, there's, and there's two-story buildings and such over there, um. Uh, you know, an extra foot and a half would shield it further, but we could also look into shielding it, you know, um, closer to the condensers and. And being able to do that as well. Uh, I think, um, yeah, we're open to either of those, um.
I have a, a parapet comment, again, I'm looking at the old. One from April. And it seems to be more extensive slightly. Or more definition, um. Than what I see on the current one, the current one, if you roll a right or white areas have what I would consider a small parapet. And in the brown. Area. It's very. To even call it a cornice, I don't, you know. Yeah. So the other one had more of a defined, I guess, cornice at the top.
Cornice, yeah.
Maybe a little more.
Slightly more. Yes.
Visually, you know, again, I'm thinking of. What the neighborhood looks like, what people do with roofs that are flat, typically where commercial buildings typically had. As we've discussed here, more of a cornice or parapet kind of idea, um, just for fitting in. So I wanted to make that comment, I also wanted to make one more window comment, um, you have predominantly. What appears to be double-hung windows, which would be. Very consistent with what you would see in the neighborhood, however. There are some groupings of three where the center one is, um, just a plain panel.
Fixed window, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's some ones where there's single fixed windows and then there's even more odd is somewhere there's a double. Where there's like a double hung and then a fixed one in the same two grouping. Um, two window grouping, um. Again, to my eye and, and what I would see, um, it's, it's not consistent. Of course, in that kind of neighborhood, you would never have seen. People had to open windows, that was the reason in the old days, because there wasn't air conditioners, we don't have to do that now, but as you try and. Make things look a little bit more consistent, that's a comment I have that. Bothered me a little bit.
So on A four point one, I'm looking at the exterior and I have those uh, windows that you're talking about, because I didn't quite understand them, so. Um. On the exterior elevation west, A four point one two, kind of the center white one. There's a, they don't really look like double hung, because they're not. Halfway down, it's like.
Yeah, that's the cottage sash, yeah.
What is it called?
A cottage style.
Cottage sash.
So they're a little bit wider on the bottom with the fixed, um, on the, on the top.
Yeah.
And then some of these, as uh, uh, as Ted pointed out, some of them are in the living rooms, uh, some of them have the three. Pain, um, so the, the fixed in the middle with the two cottage sash on either side. Uh, and then some of them have just the, the fixed in the one cottage sash, those are actually, I think, the one bedrooms, um, where the living room is a tad bit. Now, but then the twos and the threes, um.
Correct.
So, uh, that's, that's where that change came in, um. Uh, I think there probably is really the larger window even in the one beds, um, to be consistent.
On the little spot that I'm talking about, and I can't hold up my paper to show you. Um, it shows on the right-hand side, uh, the cottage. Style, and that's a gray box, so that, is that gray box a, a window?
Yes, it is.
Fixed window.
Yep.
Fixed window, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I thought that looked odd too.
Yeah, must be the color of the, the, or the, um, yes, but.
Yeah.
If you'd better see. Not fixed, but I, again, I would point out on the previous from April, all the windows appear if I'm. Correct here, to be consistent, not only. Do they appear double hung, but they appear to have lights or divisions, dividers, um, which is another historic looking feature. So there's incredible consistency within the windows and there's a more. Elaborate, uh, um. Window in terms of the lights or dividers, um. Which add interest to a building that can be a little bit plain, so, so when I look at these two and get a feeling. Uh, the one previously. I really liked that and this one is. A bit more, uh. Not as nice to me, I would say.
Okay, I think that's a discussion that we'll bring back to the commission.
So I was kind of asking that.
Right.
Kind of in general about. Why we went, or starting with windows.
Right. Okay, so, um, so for the AC and heating. That's each apartment has its own, um, air, and there will be air conditioning?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and then, um, is that? Are there units located? In their apartment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
The furnace, the furnace or the heat pump would be in there, yeah.
All right, so and then, and then the exhaust from that will go up on the roof for all the apartments?
We're still evaluating the exhaust, I know we, we're looking at some best possible like decor. We're still evaluating the exhaust. I know we, we're looking at some best possible like decorative type louvers that would go on the front or on the, on the, on the sides where we would, and we've talked about trying to relocate, like the furnace exhaust has more of a turn down. Maybe try to route those all to the courtyard side. So um, the louver that we've used before for kitchen and bath exhaust is you can get it custom color, you can get it so that it kind of blends in with the, the color of whatever siding it's, it's coming out.
So all the apartments will exhaust out through the courtyard on the wa- walls of the courtyard area?
There, there would still be some along the, the main frontage. We can't route all the exhaust.
Okay, so they'd be kind of like what people have for a dryer vent, those would be?
Yeah, the more obtrusive, like, like the furnace requires like a PVC pipe to come out or like a concentric vent. That's a little bit more, that's a little bit larger than um, a normal, but we've used what's called an X vent where it's just kind of like a cap. That you can get that with, you can get that in a custom color. So we can get that in a color to kind of blend in with the siding. And then we've we've tried to look at where not routing those into our bump outs with our metal panel. But kind of tuck them kind of off onto the, the vinyl sided wall. So that again, they're not, you know, see these, these accent pieces with a bunch of penetrations and stuff in them.
Another benefit of that step out that we've introduced to be able to hide some of those things that there's no way to get out of not penetrating the building in some locations.
Right.
And, you know, it's always, Eric, Eric's, I feel that a thousand questions from Jane and I on penetrating the bill, uh, how penetrations, where to put them, where best, you know, from, uh, uh, just an aesthetic standpoint mostly and uh, so, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's a lot of consideration is taken there.
Well, will there be a basement or crawl space on this building?
Nope, just slab on grade.
Okay, I think that's. Thank you. I'm going to take it back to the commission.
Thank you very much.
Discussion. All right, uh, I think who would like to start? Rick?
Oh, go ahead. Push your button.
Button, yes, thank you. Well, well, I'm real disappointed to see the brick exterior leave. I think, you know, that's a quality material. Hopefully these metal panels, which I'm not familiar with, I know, I know it's a more of a contemporary new siding treatment that's being used commercially a lot these days, but I, I don't have any personal experience with it, but um, I think it can look nice. There may be a couple of different sheens we're looking at, because vinyl siding has one sheen. And a metal panel finish might have a different sheen. I don't know if you're going to give that some consideration. But, yeah, I, I was sorry to see the, the brick eliminated. I understand, you know, with the value engineering that, that you do as an architect, I understand that when you go from a conceptual design to design development, to contract documents where you're getting into the real value engineering that you know, you've, you've got to make some tough decisions about the budget. So I, I understand that process. And just sad to see the balconies go also, because I think those were a nice functional um, amenity for each of the apartments to have their own private balconies. Um, so I'm sorry about that. But on the other hand, I see some good things too. I mean, I, I like the fact that you've given some thought to the way the building orients to downtown and the idea of creating an entrance at the corner of Fulton and Emmett Street, I think is a really good functional improvement. They have a door there instead of people having to exit out the south end of the building. Or I guess it was the southeast corner of the building to, to actually go north on Emmett Street. So I, I really like that improvement. Um, I, I'm not sure about the outdoor terrace and how much, you know, use that would get. It's sort of on the north east corner of the building and it'll be in shadow, you know, a good share of the time. Uh, the, the sun in the morning is, is the only time that balcony is really going to get much sun. And people normally, you know, they're not going out to be outside in the morning. Usually, you know, outside, they, they tend to want to be outside and be in the sun, maybe more in the afternoon and evening. By that time, that corner is going to be in shadow. And so, you know, it, in the shoulder seasons when the temperature is not very warm, it's really nice to have the sun if you're outside. And so this cor- this corner really isn't going to take advantage of that very well, but I, I do understand the idea of it being on top of the, the new corner entrance there uh, at Fulton and Emmett Street. So, so that makes sense. I, I like the scaled down corner. I think the image of that at the corner will be a little nicer than it was before. The fitness room, I, I lived in Bear Creek Meadows apartments for two and a half years, about five years ago after we sold our house and had to be in a temporary location for a while. And, um, you know, they had a, they had a pretty good sized fitness room there, although, you know, that's a big apartment complex. I can't remember how many units are there. Maybe it's like two hundred and seventy or something possibly in Bear Creek Meadows. So it's a lot bigger development, but um, it, it was a good sized fitness room. So I guess I'm, I'm worried a little bit about the size of a fitness room. And whether that would be adequate, but that's a, you know, that's an interior function that really doesn't have anything to do with our our um, review of the exterior, really. Um, and I guess the, my other, my other big comment was regarding the trash and recycling area, because again, having lived in Bear Creek Meadows, I couldn't believe how tenants treated the trash area. I mean, they, they had no, a lot of tenants had no regard at all for compacting their waste and trying to get it down into the dumpsters and trying to be efficient about the way all that worked. And so I, I think the two dumpsters you have here, I don't know how big it what were those, six-yard dumpsters, if I recall, right? I, I can't care how big that is, but I guess I'm a little worried about the buildup of trash and, and also the amount of recycling potentially you have there. I think, you know, that, that looks like there's more space behind the dumpsters and maybe you're going to want to have more recycling containers. The other thing I thought about is I think the Emmett County Recycling Program does, I know downtown, they coordinate with downtown business owners in terms of the pickups and the, and the containers they provide and everything. So it might be good to coordinate with Emmett County Recycling if you haven't already. Okay. Yeah, to try to improve that. I'm just worried about how that area is going to look, because there are a lot of people out there that are frankly pigs when it, when it comes to dealing with stuff like that. So I hope you can maybe um, bolster that function a little more and try to make sure it doesn't look bad. Um. I guess those are my comments.
Okay. I think what I'd like to do is approach, there's a few areas that I think we should discuss that um, require what we want to do. And I think the number one is, is the facade changes. Um. Emmett County or Emmett County, Emmett uh, Street, that's Old Town Emmett. It's an historical area. And uh, I would agree that the original plans felt residential. You know, felt in harmony with the houses across the street. Um. I think this design is lovely, but it's pretty um, industrial. And it's very much like things that are being built in, in Lansing and East Lansing. And I don't know, Emmett Street and Old Town Emmett is so close to downtown. I think we need to have a little bit of a transition, maybe have more of a softening of this, of this architecture. I think the things that made the other one feel like it fit in is the little roof hangings that kind of brought the focus on the first story, so it felt more pedestrian friendly. But when I try to imagine this structure, although very nicely designed, um, I don't feel like it's a, a good fit for Emmett Street. I think putting something this industrial looking in the um, downward maple uh, block, that that is far enough from way, from downtown, it's completely away from residential. That area, this type of architecture would fit well. So I'm wonder, wondering, I wanted to just discuss uh, how we felt about it. The old versus the new proposal. Is there a way of the new proposal of having some more detail in it so that it feels more residential? I look at this and I, I think tenement housing. It, it just has kind of a harsh look to it. And I don't, I don't know if the architect could, and like I said, it's, it's well done. It's nice looking, but I don't know that it fits in, um, in case anybody's wondering. This is one of the things that we're supposed to consider in B two B. And it's in uh, in review of building facades and features, the planning commission shall consider exterior appearance shall take into account and be compatible with surrounding structures, considering proportions, materials and penetration. Seeking to achieve some relationship with existing architectural character. And they have provide, provided their own written and granted some of that area is uh, you know, wear gosses. So on the one, on the, behind the, this building that fits right in, but on Emmett Street, it, it just feels like it needs a softer transition. You want to respond?
Um. Sure. I, I think it is in keeping with the B two B district. Um, architecturally, and I do like the um, the soft wood tones that are on it, that there, it's sort of a playback to it is the old lumber loft, the lumber area. Um. I personally like this facade without the brick. I like how it's, you know, uh, pushing a little more modern um, design. I imagine, you know, younger families living here. Um. I'm not sure what the price difference is, you know, for the materials, but um, overall, I, I like how it looks.
Okay.
Um, I am concerned about the windows, the cottage style. I don't know if they really go with the contemporary, the more modern. Um, and where we have the three windows in a row, we might as well just be doing three equal sized windows in width. And make them all cottage style and not have the casement in the middle. That seems a little awkward to me. Um, in the cottage style itself isn't really a modern styled window, so maybe it is just a regular double hung. Uh, I'm not sure if you can meet eagles with these cottage style in the bedrooms, but you must because you're showing it. Um, yeah, I don't know. I kind of like it.
Okay.
I like the main entryway where it stepped down with the terrace above. I can imagine some heat lamps out there, a little gas fires, people sitting out there in the summer after the sun goes down. Not many people are going to sit out there in the winter. Um, sometimes the, the sun out of the west is harsh in the evenings, in the summertime, so. Um, I don't know, I actually really like how it looks.
Okay. Charlie?
I was incredibly excited about this project and still am about the project in general, but in terms of the aesthetics of the project, I was incredibly excited by what we approved in April of twenty twenty-two. I thought that the uh, you, you mentioned the awnings on the first floor, that's for sure, and the balconies, absolutely. And the balconies provided that change in depth that they're talking about the new facade having. But it was much more dramatic with the balconies. Uh, the cornice treatment at the top, the parapets was I, I just, I was really excited about it. And upon review of the elevations in this packet, um, there are things that I like. I do like the, the uh, the corner at uh, Emmett and Fulton. I think that's very creative. But the rest of the facade, especially since you raised the point about the venting of the uh, heat and air conditioning systems and uh, there'll also be bathroom fans that need to be vented. By the time you add that to this facade elevation, I, I just, I'm left very cold by the look of it. And uh, even with a lot of plantings outside, I, I really prefer the first uh, design dramatically.
Matt, would you like to weigh in?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at the original design, um, you know, things I like about that design. I don't dislike this new design. I think some different windows um, would look better. Um. But I, I don't, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no to this design, but um, I think there's, you know, you put some different windows in there. Um, you know, I, I think it looks good. I don't think it, you know, looks bad. Um. And I, I imagine some of these changes were made, you know, were budgetary. Um. Or, or no? Okay, okay. Cause I, I was, I mean, the changes are, are dramatic and I I thought, well, maybe it was a, a budgetary move to keep you know, the numbers down and.
The equivalent uh, to the brick, obviously, but uh, and I do think, um, this, the material.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sorry. Uh, and the materials, just speaking to the materials, uh, I think there probably is some, um, some definition that may not come through on the elevations uh, versus maybe what some of the renderings may have provided in the uh, in the previous submittal as well. Um, so uh, that's just a quick reaction to that. Um, but I just wanted to make it clear that, yeah, these really weren't a budgetary driven changes. Uh, and this is not a, um, an exchange for a material that is less quality by any means. Um, uh, so.
Okay, thank you. I bring it back to the.
So it was the appearance of the balconies really that was something that you felt needed to be eliminated? The, the, I mean, that, that's the main reason.
That is a big consideration, yes. You know, there, there also is, you know, there's waterproofing considerations and things like that when you're obviously doing um, penetrating that side material um, for longevity, uh, to of the building, individual decks, uh, they deteriorate. Uh, and um, you know, there, there are considerations in further than just also, as I pointed out earlier on, where what one may think is beautiful on their balcony, many do not from the outside. And uh, I, I think I myself may have been a culprit of that at one point in my life in an apartment. But um, that is a huge consideration uh, for when we are making that change. On top of and uh, this is just maybe art, but, but we saw this is a huge opportunity to do what we did do on the corner. Um, uh, uh, and add that element that was not there and really no consideration of of doing something at that corner was taken in that previous design, this, that really added something, um, which I think many of you have already agreed to. Uh, with, yes, I wrote that down, actually. Yes, that corner, ninety percent sure also has a lake view up there. So we really made sure that we could place that. We, we had considerations of where that, that roof terrace was going to go, but we felt that that was the, the best place for it at the corner there.
It's, it's a view for now. Right. I don't know if that'll be forever, but for now. All right, I bring it back to the planning commission. Um, anybody else have? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quiet. Just in follow-up to the balconies, I totally understand the point about inconsistencies on balcony with people hanging their swimsuits and bucking their bikes out on the balcony and. Uh. A, a lot of that is well within the control of the management. A lot of that is well within the control of the management of the apartment complex. And uh. I just, the architectural features of the balconies to me are. Exceptional in comparison to the facade. With the exception of the corner. The rest of the facade.
Okay. Todd?
So I'm kind of, um, I guess, agreeing with that. I I like the corner, but I, other than that, um. I like the other design. I like the brick. I like the awnings. I like the window treatments. I like the balconies. So there's not much that for me was better in this design, and certainly if we're talking about a standard consistency with the neighborhood. Um, I I'm not seeing modern in that neighborhood exactly. I'm seeing turn of the century. That's what it kind of is.
I think a good example is the um, the rehab center. They outfitted hundred year old homes and over time they've expanded. And they are finishing up brand new buildings. That have are very much in harmony with the very old buildings. Now, that's that type of architecture isn't appropriate for what you're trying to do, but. They did manage, and I guess that's what. Like I said, I like this, and I'd love to see it like a maple block, block, it would be. A great spot. But if, is there a way of softening this? So that it has some of that. More residential look to it. I I don't know. I mean, you've done a great job, but it just doesn't. If you could take the facade on the Emmett Street where those houses are, the Emmett North. And have it be more traditional, then you could have the rest of it be. I don't know. Rick?
I'll send you a, I'll counter that a little bit in the sense that. I think the breakdown of these facades into. Repetitive rhythms kind of does reflect the small houses that are up and down. Emmett Street and and in the neighborhood there, almost in in some ways maybe better than the. More elongated sections of facade that were in the previous design. So I I'm not, I I I believe that it does blend with the neighborhood in that respect.
Not to be contradictory, but. Most of those houses along Emmett Street have porches and more three dimensionality to them. Than this new facade would indicate, which is one of the reasons why I like the previous design so much. Was it seemed to blend in more with the neighborhood. Uh, and granted, there's some, you know, the the balconies look very modern in the in the new design. It was a nice blend of the more traditional and the more modern as far as I was concerned.
And for me, it just doesn't, I mean, I know what you're saying about the divisions in the new design. Like, almost like individual units, but there's no door on them. So it's it's just not, it's one big building um, with a couple doors on the end and. It this doesn't make me think of a row of homes that are really close or anything cuz there's no doors, it's just not.
Yeah, it doesn't look like rural townhouses, so for sure.
But it but it does break up a long facade in a way that makes it. Compatible with the historic neighborhood, I believe.
Yeah, I just think the window treatments were so far superior in the other design.
Well.
But I guess matter of taste.
It is a matter of taste. Uh, I'd like to direct this uh, question to Eric. Would there be a way of? Kind of softening, I don't know what better word to use, but just. Giving it more of a residential edge versus versus industrial edge. Keep what you have cuz a lot of it's really good, but would there be a way of? Making it less austere?
Yeah, I think we can. Play with some materiality and may and maybe look at some elements that might. Bring that like those third floor elements that might bring that scale down. A little bit more like we had before, and I think we really would plan that just on the main, the main facades for for Emmett and Fulton. Excuse me, I don't think the previous design, I don't think we were looking to do that all around the building, just those main. Those main facade, so maybe there's a slightly different treatment. That we look at at those at those main facades. Um, and then maybe something a little simpler or yard or something like that.
Charlie?
Uh, it might be a terrible idea, but just to throw it out there. Perhaps you could break up the facade on Emmett Street with some individual entrances to every other. Uh, ground floor apartment. Uh, again, with some kind of uh, covered treatment over the over the entrance way, so. That's there's a. As a way to make the facade more interesting.
Well, I don't know how you do that. You have bedrooms and living.
You've been struggling with space, then, yeah. Yeah.
I think that was part of the.
You do have in the old design, you have the balcony areas and you have sliders. Uh, sliding door, you actually do have entrances in the previous design.
Eric, did you?
No, I was, I was just gonna add like part of the reason why I think we decided not to go to balconies was, I mean, this is a. A limited site, right? We don't have just ten acres to do any size building on it, so it was kind of a little bit. The balconies really would have sacrificed the size of the units as well. Um, and that was one of, one of the reasons why on top of what it, what Andrew said is, you know, we'd rather figure. Let's give the unit another. You know, forty square feet than have a space that they can use. You know, six months out of the year and the rest of the year it's gonna just collect stuff and. It's, and again, and and we've seen this, we've seen this architecturally too is. Um, we've done some projects here in Grand Rapids along the same lines and. And it really, what happens is. You you start to create a little bit more of a community at the building. If you have your own balcony, you go out there and you. You drink coffee, you know, whatever, but if you've got a common space that you go to. And this is, this is what we have on the inside as well as some large communal spaces. Where you start to, you know, bring in community a little bit more than just having everybody go from the front door. To their unit and then back out, you you know, and I I think it's worked pretty well at a couple of projects here. In Grand Rapids that are very similar as far as kind of workforce housing model.
So what if if that request of softening it, uh, what comes to mind? I mean, doors aren't gonna work, but what comes to mind for you?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've discussed maybe introducing maybe some brick or maybe it's not the same brick, but it's it's a different material. You know, that that we're introducing, um, I think we could, we could look at some options for that. Um, again, maybe there is some kind of more of an element. You know, that, you know, at at that first floor window line that would maybe. Bring that scale down a little bit more, some kind of. You know, shed roof or a little, you know, small little shading device or something like that that might. Just help kind of bring that three story scale down to the to the single, single story scale.
I don't think you want to introduce an another material. I think that would be too. Sure. I think you need to, if if you're gonna play with the the design at all, I think it needs to be maybe the trim. The window surrounds the. The height of the uh. Cornice elements and some things like that possibly could. Bring some more diversity to the facades.
I think those win window overhangs as you had previously, you know, take a little balcony, the.
Onings.
But the awnings that you had, that added quite a bit. And I I'm sure the people that run that uh, that first floor would appreciate. Adding the shield. Uh, lifts over their windows. I think it makes up the design. That's that's an important element that you eliminated this this time. Even if you take away the, you know, the uh. The balconies.
Well, the way you did the overhangs for the entryways. Is very urban.
Mm hmm.
Very modern and urban. And I think the reason why. The the roofing. In the original one, it was at an angle, so it was much more residential. These entryways feel like they should be. In a big downtown somewhere. But they're lovely. You know, so I I'm. I concerned about this fitting in. And I don't know where to go from there.
Well, I I like Richard's idea of uh, awnings. I mean, maybe there could be some kind of permanent style metal awnings that aren't very. Deep. But quite shallow, you know. Twelve to. Sixteen inches deep or something that are just over the first floor windows that would kind of, it's probably his concern about. You know, the lack of porches, you know, those balconies, they. Or those onions might create a horizontal line that would sort of be a. They wouldn't be a porch certainly, but they would, you know, have a. Projecting element that's makes reference to porches historically, that sort of an idea.
Yeah.
And then they, I I would assume they'd be handled the same way that the entryways are where they would just be. You know. Parallel and perpendicular. To the building.
I mean, I think we could look at maybe a little shed roof kind of, maybe it's a metal roofed awning that is over those windows too. You know?
Okay.
Is there any sense that um, there's ability or? To have a design where the the different sections of this building, the white and the brown are slightly different? Would that help or not? I don't know.
As far as the height?
Yeah, they do vary a little.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if we could, if we could, if we are gonna look at it a little bit taller, but again, we were trying to stay. You know, at that thirty three foot level, I think, you know, if we do look to add a little bit more of a parapet like we've discussed. Um. You know, that might be, that might help a little bit to. Make it not all as one plane.
Just one.
As well as, yeah.
And that's something we looked at specifically. We were having trouble with the thirty three feet, obviously. Yeah, so there is a varying small difference and obviously right now there is. A little bit larger.
Right.
Cornice there than there is in the back, um, to get that little. Height difference.
Just not enough.
Right. But it could be more.
So if you did that and, you know, cuz we were talking, you would just do it on Emmett and Fulton, but it seems off if you didn't do it on.
I think we would continue in that situation, yeah.
Courtyard being addressed differently.
Yeah.
But I think, and that's the greenway. So that's an open space and I'd like that building to look lovely.
We would agree, and we've always focused on those three sides kind of the same as much as possible, yeah.
Right.
Well, perhaps then you could alternate by increasing the parapet on. I I'm being arbitrary on the uh, the the white sections. And add an awning. Over the windows in the brown sections, I mean, just. You're the other, but if something along those lines might help like.
It almost seems like they, the white thing should be the emphasis. They get the awnings and they get the height.
Better, yeah.
Cuz the others are recessed.
Right.
And they're, and they're uh, neutral, so it makes sense to highlight the white.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I. I feel. With these changes, maybe I it it can fit. Is there anybody who? Has a different idea?
I'd like to see it. It sounds. Better. It's really nice to see it too with the the landscape like we did previously.
Right. So Lisa, if we asked for that change. Would we have to have another meeting before we approve it?
If you want the planning commission to review those changes, you would have to have that meeting, yes. Otherwise, it would be staff review.
Okay. How does the commission feel about whether we see it or it's a staff review?
I would wanna see it.
Okay.
I mean, that was the whole point of this.
Right.
Approve subject to materials or material review instead of. You know. Like, no, just so that we can keep progressing on our.
I agree.
And one of those, yeah, it's the it's.
So I guess maybe we could have proven on condition that the uh. The new design comes back and then we approve. That.
For the facade only.
For the facades only. That makes sense, okay. Lisa? That's good, all right. All right. I did have a few other.
You have to hold on something here?
Yes, but I I I wanna get cleared up. In terms of landscaping, are we all comfortable with what Lisa recommended as the changes? Any other discussion on landscaping?
I'm comfortable with it, but I would love to see it in the in the new renderings.
Okay. So you can do.
Yeah, we can do that. That's definitely.
All right, and on the site plan, I think we need to be showing where the existing neighbors fences.
Okay.
Not a problem.
All right. Okay, then landscaping's taken care of. Um, I, on the southwest stairs to the greenway. They're proposing that you can safely get on the greenway from their front door. Down Fulton, which I went and looked at the site and I agree that's not a problem. I'm wondering if it's. If we need to have a stairs there. To get to the greenway or an ADA compliant. Entrance to the greenway. That'll just be grass. So why couldn't somebody just walk? I, you know, it's hard to know what's gonna happen with a lot. I don't know how much correcting you're gonna have to do. You know, with. Everything on the left, but right now there's a cement. Structure and that's all gonna be torn out?
Yes.
Okay.
I think there does need to be a set of steps there, you know, if people wanna cut. Through and go down the grassy slope, that's fine, but. You know, I've observed people in Pennsylvania Park, you know, since they cut the opening. In the parking lot there. People come through and they go right with that grassy rubbish. Down toward, you know, those little museum shop in that direction. I've seen numerous people slip on that. Slip when it's. Slipper, so I think a set of steps should be where in a place.
Well, it doesn't, once they remove that cement, I think that the, your property is gonna be pretty level with the.
It does depend eventually what the greenway will do, the where the tracks are, does drop a little bit, um, Tim probably knows this really well, um, but our site will be brought, you know, that wall obviously is is. Shows the drop off, um, and so there still will be a little bit of a drop off to where the where the existing condition is now. There may be as the greenway designed where the greenway raises a little bit, um, and there's fill brought in, so that's a little bit of why it's hard to plan for. Accessible access off of there. The stairs are a little bit easier to react to there, um. And we, I think we like the connection to be able to be provided there, so folks don't run down that grass hole, um, hill.
Well, if you're going to add the stairs, it doesn't need to be ADA, right?
Yes.
So it could just be paved, a paved ramp.
Uh, that's, uh, maybe Tim knows the answer to that.
I know, it's early to tell cuz you don't know what's gonna.
It gets to be.
That's the problem. Right, I agree with you, but in addition to that, um, short of ADA situations and people, um, I just have some elderly neighbors and people who. Really do way better on steps than any, e- even a grade I don't think is that bad. Man, they have trouble with it.
There's no, there's no question that Fulton Street. Is a level access to the bicycle path. But it's ironic that the bike rack here is at the other end of the building.
You got a good point there.
Yes, and uh, I think uh, we could also add a bike, I think we have discussed actually a bike rack on the north on the corner of Fulton, it'd probably be more guest, um, but. Just it's out on the public realm, but.
Well, if if the bike path is gonna be level with Fulton, we have to assume the bike path is also gonna be level with Washington.
Correct.
So. There can't be a whole lot of grade between Washington and this corner of the building. The south, uh, the southeast, the southwest corner, uh, northwest corner of the building.
Uh, our site is sort of flat open, brought up a little bit, so what if the existing condition will be higher, our grade will be higher than what the existing condition is now, that's where that slope comes into play.
Well, I think that probably we want to have it on the plan that 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 that's going to happen. They have stair, a stairway there to request it. And then if it ends up there's flat, then they could come back and that, could that be just a. A staff change?
Yes, that could.
Okay. That probably makes sense to include it in our. Um, you know, agreement here, and I I think everybody's fine with stairs. It does not have to be ADA compliant cuz there's an alternate ADA compliant route.
Okay.
All right.
One other thing that relates to sidewalks that I have thought of that we might wanna consider. Am I correct in interpreting the site plan that there are portions of existing sidewalk? That you're intending to try to preserve?
I believe you are correct from the plan, um, and I don't know if you know, uh, the only section of sidewalk that probably would. Be able to be retained as a section, um, along Emmett probably, uh, but, uh. That the all down Fulton will most likely need, it's already extended all the way and will be new. Um, and the corner of Fulton at that entry point will all be redone and that is, we're planning to do that. Um, so, uh, yes, the only section that really could be retained is the front inch along Emmett. In between the driveway and that section, we have to redo at that entrance.
Right, well, I was just thinking that maybe as one of the conditions, we would want to say that. All existing sidewalks damaged by construction or during the construction period. Would need to be replaced as part of the project. If they, they were going to try to save any existing, they're, they're likely going to get. Busted up and cracked.
We, we agree with that too. Yeah, yeah, uh, we, we, we want the sidewalks to look. New in front of our new project, um, yes.
Okay, I, one question I forgot to ask, in the, in the, um, courtyard, you have, uh, organic. Kind of patio area and on one drawing it looks like brick. Um, but you've never specified what that's meant of.
It tests my memory and I don't know if we have identified, um, that I'm, I'm, I think you're in the main courtyard where the. The figure eight kind of, I don't.
Yes, yeah, that organic thing, yeah.
I don't think we had determined a surface, but I think the base material would be concrete or better.
Right, and stamped concrete or something better is probably where we would come.
And then, um, it looks like there's a lot more coverage than the original plan, so the city will have to. Look at drainage stuff again, Lisa? Charlie?
In, in the conditions, uh, is Carolyn's request to look at the, uh, potential of a. Loading zone on Fulton Street being added to.
I don't know that conversation, okay.
Well, she points out that the elevator is at the.
But you're talking about the loading.
Loading, loading zone, not a loading dock, no.
Right, loading zone, yes. I had that, uh.
Because the, whereas the, the Emmett Street is carved in for parking. There is no such current accommodation on the Fulton Street side.
Okay.
I, I don't know whether that's a city responsibility or whether that would be a developer responsibility.
I think that would be a city would designate that. No?
No, not typically. They would have to approve it though. I mean, it would have to be approved. For them to, I mean, we would, we would have, it would have to meet the city's standards. It would have to be something. That they work out with Department of Public Works.
Okay.
I do think that's a good idea that Carolyn pointed out.
Well, I think it's. Okay, so. I'm just organizing here. So we're adding, uh, and anybody who else thinks of something. We have the eight and then we're adding, um, uh. Development of a loading zone and then sidewalk replacement is a construction language. Is there anything else that we discussed that we should be adding?
Roof screening, uh, mechanical equipment.
Okay, and then the, how do we describe the?
facade.
Right.
Some, you know, for additional review.
Anything else? So any more questions, discussion? Ready for, uh?
What about the signage? I know it said no signage, but there's signage on the building. Have we calculated any of that or is that?
Oh, you're right. Submit a of any signage for staff review and approval.
That all goes through a sign from the application process.
Okay.
But is that what we're seeing on the building is their proposed signage?
We would have to get exact measurements of what the sign area is, what the wall area is to determine that calculation.
Okay.
And, uh, that, that was there kind of as a placeholder. Um, we see that opportunity, but, um. Ultimately, we know that we need to go back into the sign, um, process.
Right, uh. Motion to. Proceed.
I'll make the motion to approve. Uh, the project is submitted tonight. Along with the. Twelve. Conditions that we've outlined. Do you want me to repeat those or are we familiar enough?
For the record, it should be read.
Okay. Uh, the conditions being number one, additional screen added along the west and south property lines. And three street trees planted along the north property line. Number two, submit a lighting plan for staff review. Number three, minimum of twenty-eight bike parking spaces. Number four, submit all. Any signage for staff review and approval. Number five. Review and approval of the stormwater management system by the Department of Public Works. Number six, rate of rate permits issued by DPW for curb cut relocations. Remodels, sidewalks and hydrant location. Seven utility connections coordinated with the DPW. Eight, final plans approved by the city and signed by the chairperson and the applicant. Nine, all existing sidewalks damaged by construction, uh, be replaced as part of the project. Ten, additional loading and, and the addition of a loading, unloading zone. Along Fulton Street on the north edge. Eleven, uh, screening of the rooftop units in some manner. And twelve, possible facade revisions per meeting discussion this evening.
To, uh. Be reviewed and approved by the planning commissioner at a future date.
Okay, sounds good.
Right, we have a motion by Rick.
I'll second that.
Okay, and Carolyn seconds it and it's to, uh, approve with the twelve conditions. Uh, any more discussion? Ted?
I just had one comment, maybe it's, it's already apparent, but. Uh, we discussed some of the window, uh, different feelings and concerns, so I hope in, that's falling under facade that there will be some. Consideration to the.
That was on my list as one of those things. Yes, right.
Yes, I would consider that being all the things we discussed, the, the height, raising the height of the parapet, adding.
The awnings.
Awnings, yeah, the windows. Just to make a little softer.
Uh, before the vote, I just have a quick afterthought question that I could ask. Um, the bike parking, it's not covered currently, correct?
That is my, yes, that is my understanding without, um, and.
So for winter storage, is there sufficient? Storage space somewhere in the facility for people to get their bikes out of harm's way?
Uh, always a consideration of, and I think we would listen, look at, um, interior bikes parking, exterior bikes parking, um. Uh, we are, we do have the bike parking located exterior right now. There is one of the locations that Jane mentioned is under. Uh, one of the, the awnings on the far west, obviously not great in the wintertime. In the wintertime, there will, it's better than nothing, um, that was the secondary location, uh, of the larger bike parking. We did look at it on the north, um, the north entrance corner as well. Uh, in the wintertime, if we needed to get fully out of the elements, it, it would obviously need to go in their unit, um, which is, uh. In a number of our buildings where folks. A, a lot of folks take their bike into their units anyway. They have bikes that they don't want to leave out at night, um, or even out in an exterior. Situation and, um, you know, bikes are mounted in apartments in a lot of different ways or, uh, and stored in a lot of different ways, um. So.
Is, is the elevator going to be large enough to accommodate a bicycle?
Yes, it needs to accommodate a gurney, um.
Okay, yeah, okay.
You know, I forgot to ask, uh, southeast wing. Um, that kind of faces Washington. You have what look like storefronts. What are those? Are you going to allow things like pop-up shops or is?
I think storefront was identified, um, on the south. I think you're talking about where the office situation is located. These corner there, um, so that is the property management office where there are more storefront looking larger windows. Uh, just visual sightlines gives, you know, a little bit more engagement than just the, the more of the residential window.
Terminal term in terms of the, the type of raising levels.
Right, okay.
Yeah, a little more visual, visual cue of where the entry is instead of some just door somewhere. It's got glass. You can really see when you're in the parking lot of where that entry is, so, yeah.
No, I thought it might not be a bad idea because you're at the four corners. Alright, are we all set? Roll call phone.
Paul?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Roma?
Yes.
Detmer?
Yes.
Mick Sweeney?
Yes.
Ryan Ian?
Yes.
Moonen?
Yes.
Alright, um, thank you very much for the, the, uh, taking the feedback. I think this. Successful with some little bit of changing.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and we're really looking forward to this coming to fruition.
And we appreciate the question.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Our next, yeah, our next meeting is what, the sixteenth? Oh, it's April nineteenth is our next meeting?
Correct.
Now. Oh, um, is there any public comment tonight? There's no public comments, so commissioner comments? Commissioner comments? Alright, and so, and then updates.
I just wanted to let you guys know for the April nineteen meeting, we do have a proposal for a short-term rental at three fourteen West Mitchell Street. Um, and then there's also been a submittal for a rezoning of a parcel on Clarion Avenue. Um, the current owner owns a large parcel that I believe is I one, so it's industrial. And there's a very small parcel within that parcel that's residential, so he's asking to have that combined into that industrial. Um, zoning, so that's something else that will likely be coming for review.
So is Mr. Ike Rangeli going to be there at that meeting?
I hope so. Yes, that's the plan.
I don't quite know how that's going to, um, because there are bound to be conflicts.
Right.
So going forward.
Yeah, when there's conflicts, he'll, will accuse himself and that's kind of how we operate for town. Wanted to update the, are we done, Lisa? Sorry, okay. Very quickly, uh, staffing change, um, that you may already be aware of anyway, but. Um, this week as of Monday, Lisa is our new full-time zoning administrator. Uh, so she'll essentially kind of run the day-to-day, uh, uh, planning department, working very closely with John. Um, as our planning consultant and we'll kind of obviously keep evaluating that to see. Um, my philosophy is whenever there's a change, that's a great time to evaluate and, uh, consider. Any sort of, uh, options to consider, so I want to take my time to consider that, this position, figure out. You know, just because we've done it a certain way, doesn't always mean it's the right way or there's a different way to consider, so we're going to take our time to do that. John's been gracious enough to step in on a contractual basis and I know will do a good job for us, so. So Lisa, as of Monday, is our full-time zoning administrator. We have posted her former job. Uh, internally and, and hope to have that filled internally, um, by the end of this week, so.
And I want to say that Lisa, you got the, um, certification for.
Yes, I did actually three years ago, right before COVID, three weeks before COVID.
So we'll fix our parking tickets for us.
I have a question about the schedule, the, the Wednesday is temporary though, still, right?
Well, while we're using, uh, John, uh, we'll need to, we'll need the Wednesday because he has a, another, um. Conflict on the third Thursday and another neighboring community where he does the same thing, so until, until that. Changes, we'll need to keep that third Wednesday, but obviously we'll evaluate kind of how we want to function in that. Position, uh, if that changes, obviously we can go back to, you know, our normal third Thursday. Um, but while we have John engaged, we'll need to meet on the third Wednesday.
That's what our membership law says, it's official, in our calendar. Alright, is that it Shane? Okay, this meeting is adjourned at eight forty-six.
Seven.
Seven, oh, that clock is goofy, seven forty-six, okay.
Thank you.